Good evening and welcome to the Gilderland Central School District Board of Education meeting for July 21st, 2020. You could all please sound yourself and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Okay. All right, so this is a special meeting and first on the agenda tonight, we have special inspections and construction materials. So turn it to Neil.
Okay, thank you, Seema. Yes, before you use a resolution to approve Dante Group to provide special inspections and construction materials testing services for the first phase of the school district's $30.9 million capital construction project and attached a summary of the pricing and it will be in accordance with those unit prices noting in the paper.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the RFP?
It's almost.
Far?
Second.
Second. Are there any comments or questions, Neil? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Next, for emergency purchase of supplies and materials, back to you, Neil.
Okay, thank you. As you know, COVID-19 is here and we're obviously having to buy equipment, materials and supplies related to that effort. So I will redo the emergency resolution as purchasing resolution. So that in accordance with Board Policy 6700-R, Board of Education determines that an emergency situation has continued to exist for the purchase of mandated and recommended materials, equipment and supplies to ensure the health and safety of students, staff and visitors resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic and declares that such purchases will not be subject to competitive bidding requirements. However, the district will endeavor to make purchases at the lowest to the extent practical under the circumstances. And I think as you all know, we have a number of supplies, hand sanitizer, face masks, non-contact thermometers, disinfectant sprayers, gloves, polycarbonate shields if we can get them, all still very much in short supply or with fluctuating prices or we think we have an order and then the quantity is not the right quantity or unit of measure, I should say, smaller than what we were led to believe. So we just need to have this resolution in place so that we can get materials, equipment and supplies on hand and ready for the reopening of school.
Neil, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Wasn't there something I read in the paper, someone in our district, one of the young people was making 3D masks or making those shields out of our 3D, from our 3D printers?
Yep.
Can we do that?
I, we can. I'm not sure if they meet all of the specifications or not. I'm not sure where that stands right now, but there are sources out there for different items. We just need to make sure we have sufficient supplies and that they will meet the needs of our employees.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if they're in short supply and we can make them and they are, you know, they do meet specifications, that might be a way of providing it. So it might be something we want to find out quick so we can start making them.
Yes, that was a while ago, so I haven't heard about that recently, but face shields was one of those items.
Neil, can I? But we, do we need a motion first?
I'm sorry?
That's okay. I have a question too, but do we need a motion first to talk about this? Is we voting on it correct?
Correct.
Okay, can I have a motion? That's okay. Can I have a motion to approve this emergency purchase of supplies and materials?
Don't move.
Gloria, second. Blanca? Go ahead, Rebecca, you can ask your question and I'll ask.
I was just wondering if you've had trouble ordering them. I mean, a lot of those emergency supplies are really hard to find.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why we're looking at this particular resolution. We are out with a number of vendors. We are out with, Bosse has some of this available too, so we're working through them. We're working with other suppliers. It's day to day, it's item by item, sometimes hour by hour, but trying to find the items that we need. The availability of the items, a lot of it is, they may advertise they have them. When it's time to go place the order, they're not in stock. So that's a struggle we have. Pricing also fluctuates, that's another factor. Or a recent one was, we thought we were getting hand sanitizer, I believe it was, and the quantity that was advertised and what we had ordered, in fact, was a different quantity size, that they, they didn't have the right information for that product and price quantity. So it's still a very difficult market to find these types of items. Cliff Noonie is doing a fantastic job out there, working with a number of suppliers and trying to make sure that we have quantities of everything that we need available to us. But it's a challenge with everybody looking for the same items at the same time.
Right.
Neil, does that include those Plexiglas shields or some, you know, not, not the ones you wear on your face, but that you would put between a teacher and a student, part of it?
Well, those shields cannot be Plexiglas in schools. It has to be polycarbonate, which is unavailable right now.
Okay. Plexiglas is flammable, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, so New York State Education requirements for school buildings, you can't flame them with materials. So they've said you can't use that. You can use polycarbonate, it's just in very short supply.
Neil, is there any, or I don't know what the latest update is about support from the state or federal government for, for purchasing all of these things?
Yeah, we, outside of Bosse's, which we're in with a number of school districts and that has been very helpful to us. We, there's a number of items that we're buying through them. Outside of that, we're really on our own. There is no other supply chain from any other entity.
Any other questions?
But Neil, we are keeping track of our expenses, right?
Yes, for female, federal emergency management assistance, we've met with them already. We've started that process. So we will be able to be eligible for some level of reimbursement for these supplies, but that's not the supply chain side. That's basically recouping a portion of the cost.
I have a couple of questions. If that's okay. Can you hear me okay? I had to switch to my laptop. Okay, thank you. So Neil, are we approving money that you will definitely spend or that you may spend? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, say schools don't open, or say they only open for a week, are we then stuck with everything we bought? Because you're sort of, you know, you're sort of stuck right now. If you don't move fast, there may not be supplies, right?
Correct. This resolution is really not a money resolution. It's a competitive bidding requirement that we're, we're talking about competitive.
Okay.
Yeah, so what this allows us to do is, in an emergency situation, we will try our best to do competitive pricing, but if we need to jump on something, we now have that flexibility to do that if the board approves this resolution to provide the necessary materials, equipment and supplies.
Who decides how many are necessary?
Well, Cliff Noonie is the one that's handling this, our director of facilities right now, but we do have some requirements for, for example, for having to supply masks potentially to students and staff, or two students and staff if they ask for one. Hand sanitizer is really going along with our reopening model. So how many classrooms do we have? Or do we need those products? And, and we're doing it on that basis. You know, the thermometers, we're working with our health office staff and nurses and trying to make sure we have adequate number of those to, that we can utilize for, for students, staff and visitors as they, as they may be needed.
Okay, so one of the reasons I ask is, I know in terms of agencies at the state level, that some purchases have been made and then later, you know, all these thermometers aren't very reliable, but they were very expensive. So I'm, I'm just trying to avoid that at our level, I guess. And so I wondered if those sorts of things would be explored, if not by us, by this, by Cliff or someone at some point before they make the purchase and spend the money. I wouldn't want to self-waste any money, just to be honest with you.
Yeah, and that's a delicate balance, as you can imagine, because we need all of these supplies for reopening. And they also, there's a long lead time and quantities may be there or may not be there. So we're in this catch 22. If we wait too long, there might not be any available and the required for opening. If we go sooner, we may have the supplies on hand, but then we could get shut down. There is no perfect solution to all of that, but we're not buying for a year's worth. We're buying to get us into, right now, into the fall. So the start of school and maybe six weeks in is our initial procurement process that we're looking at. So we're trying to balance that out.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so all in favor to approve the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. All passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have our goal setting session. Marie, did you want to start? Did you want me to start?
Um, well, Seema, maybe you want to set the stage while I try to figure out my PowerPoint here.
Sure. I think, while Marie pulls that up, I think you guys got the email I sent with the poem. I just thought I'd read it as we go into this discussion, because it'll probably take some time. So it's called "An Invitation to Brave Space" by Mickey Scott B. Jones. "Together, we will create brave space." Because there's no such thing as a safe space. We exist in the real world. We all carry scars and we all have caused wounds in this space. We seek to turn down the volume of the outside world. We amplify the voices that fight to be heard elsewhere. We call for each other to more truth and love. We have the right to start somewhere and continue to grow. We have the responsibility to examine what we think we know. We will not be perfect. This space will not be perfect. It will not always be what we wish it to be, but it will be our brave space together. We will, and we will work on it side by side. I just thought it was a good poem to read because I think goal setting can be messy and people make mistakes and they're learning along the way. And so because it's a public meeting, I just wanted to make sure that it was stated that, you know, nothing is set in stone as we talk, but it's, you know, it's a work in progress. And I can see your screen, Marie.
Yep.
Okay. Alrighty, so let me just maybe recap a little bit of the conversation that, that Seema and Gloria and I had on Friday afternoon as we were trying to, you know, frame what our work would look like tonight. You know, obviously, we, we have, you know, really just a little over an hour, so we're, we're getting started as opposed to perhaps doing the, the whole kind of planning process. So here's what we came up with in terms of a, kind of a little mini agenda within an agenda. So one thing we're going to start with is just a brief review of the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Education and the superintendent, and by extension when, for superintendent, and it means, you know, and everybody who works for, for the district, and what's the work that they do and the roles and responsibilities they have. I took this from some work we had previously done with the NISBA, who worked with us a couple years ago. The other thing, I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory about, well, the three of us did, was last January, we spent some time writing some board goals. Our spring got pretty disrupted. It's probably the understatement of the century. So we wrote them and then we have not done much with them. So that's what we'd like to get back to a little bit today. And the idea is to focus on three themes that seem to weave through those five goals. So we'll talk about that. And then, you know, the nuts and bolts of, of the work, we would hope that maybe tonight we can actually identify three SMART goals and we'll talk a little bit about what a SMART goal is. And then finally, talk a little bit about what our next steps are. The only other thing I'll, I'll say before we kind of jump into this is that our entire leadership team met all day today and are meeting all day tomorrow as well for our summer retreat. We did a combination of in our large gym and outdoors using social distancing and had, I think, a great first day of a retreat, where we're, we're looking at issues of diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice and, and how it plays out within our school district. So we're going to continue that work tomorrow. So we definitely want to make sure that there is kind of alignment between where the board sees all of this going and then where the district sees it all going. So I just wanted to put that as an aside. So I'm going to just move along then. So this first slide really just captures the, the different domains of the parts of the governance team. So you see under Board of Education, you really have the 30,000-foot view of the school district with our mission and our vision, which is a, which is a goal, which is a couple of statements established by the board. Goals are there, obviously, policy is there. We spend lots of time working on policy. The board also provides oversight to the work and, and evaluation. On the other side of the, of the screen, you see under superintendent, and again, by extension, all those who work in the school district, we focus on the how, our operations, the financial management. We need to be mindful of regulations and actually, we, as a superintendent, we, we, I look at how we write our regulations to enact policy. And my role is to recommend and to advise, but that's where it ends really. The, the board is the one who acts. And then as the superintendent in our leadership team, we also have the role of, you know, enforcing laws, rules and regulations to make sure we are, you know, doing things the way we are supposed to do within a public school system. This next slide, I kind of like this because it puts all of those big words into, I think, questions that are easy to wrap your head around. So the Board of Education will focus on end results, like where is it that we want to be as a school district? Whereas superintendent focuses on, well, what, what are the best means to that end? While the board will ask what and why and how much and how well. And the superintendent side, we ask questions like, you know, how, when, by whom, where, the process questions. The tools of the board, our, our mission, our goals, our policies, our assurances, our standards. And the goal, and the tools of the superintendent are things like strategies, procedures, regulations, assignments, documentation. And then lastly, while the superintendent recommends, it's the board who votes and it's that vote that brings things to reality. So let me pause here. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts on this? Hearing none. I'll, I'll move us along. So back in January, January 16th, actually, which feels, I don't know about for you, but it feels like at least a lifetime ago. We, we spent a couple hours talking about kind of the big picture things that are on our radar as a school district. You'll, you'll recall, we spent some time looking at our ESSA data. That's the Every Student Succeeds Act data that we are required to look at and respond to in various planning documents and other reporting documents. So that's where that first goal came, to advance the learning of all students with a particular focus on closing an achievement gap for economically disadvantaged students. So if you're to look at our data right now, and that category of students who are economically disadvantaged, they are falling behind their counterparts. So we have been thinking about how do we better support those students? So that's part of what we've been working on. And number, number two is huge. We, we talked, I think at that January meeting about our workforce and how it does not reflect our growing, growing diverse population of students in Gilderland. We, we looked at data today, actually, in our retreat and we're about 26% non-white as a student population in Gilderland. And we're about 1% not white in our faculty and staff. So there's a, there's a gap there. It's not an unusual gap, but it is something that we need to think about and work towards. So hence that second goal about developing and supporting a culturally responsive workforce that reflects and honors the diversity of our student body. And the idea here is this isn't just about hiring new people of color to better reflect the makeup of our students, but also the faculty, staff and employees that we have. How do we position them to be more able to respond to our growing diverse workforce, student body? And that's largely what we talked about today. How do we get better at this? Three, I think, is probably a piece of two and one for that matter, and that is, it's about professional development and how do we do that in the ways that we know best, which are research-based and job embedded, not one-shot experiences, but things that are lasting, meaningful and embedded in the day to day. And number four is particularly meaningful in this time that we're in. We're so much dependent on remote connections, but how do we support and advance the systems that protect the cybersecurity of our network and the privacy of faculty, staff and student data? You've heard Damian speak many times about ed law 2D. You know, we're, we're constantly thinking about this technological world that we so depend upon right now. And then last but not least, you know, we're always thinking about the maintenance and improvement of our facilities to provide a safe, secure, future-ready, future-ready learning and working environment for everyone who walks through our doors. And, you know, we have a capital project going on now. We're seems, seemingly always talking about how we can improve our facilities. We did that thought exchange earlier in the school year where we heard really loud and clear from our students that that is a priority for them to have more improvements to our facilities. So that's on there as well. So on Friday, when Seema and Gloria and I spoke, we, we really zoomed in on these three themes that are, you know, they're separate themes of things that we need to work on. And the whole notion of diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice was a key topic. I spelled these out in the PowerPoint because serendipitously, our superintendent group last week had our retreat, also virtual, and we worked with a consultant on these very topics. And I included the PowerPoint in my update on Friday, but the presenters had some really good ways to think about the differences between these four words. And I, I found it to be very helpful in the course of, of that workshop and I thought it'd be helpful for all of us in this conversation. But diversity is, you know, how many, you know, how many students of color, how many teachers of color. So it's a focus on just the numbers. Whereas equity is a look at our policies and our practices and how, what do we do with those differing numbers of populations to make sure they all have equal opportunity here? And then inclusion, I know we've spent a lot of time talking about inclusion in the district, but how do we make sure everyone feels like they belong? And then the last one is the social justice piece. And, and that's really, I think, what we heard from those young ladies, recent graduates or not so recent graduates from Gilderland Central School, who are, who kind of rang the bell that we need to be doing more around this topic. And then the other two themes are our facilities, you know, an ongoing work in progress. We have old buildings and they are in, you know, something is always in need of repair or upgrade, particularly so if we think about what it means to be future-ready. And then, of course, all that gets called into question while we're trying to prepare to reopen our schools in a pandemic, which throws lots of things on their head. And then lastly is the cyber and security, cybersecurity and safety. Seema or Gloria or anyone want to jump in on, on the thinking behind focusing on these three themes tonight?
Um, I mean, I think you talked about, Marie, what we did in January. So we sat down, I think both of you were probably in the board then in January. We had that evening, we went over and talked about what was important based on that ESSA data and just what we thought was important for the district. And these are the, I think, the three themes that came across. Those were in my notes from that January meeting. And knowing that, you know, we have some time limit today, my goal or my objective, I think, I shared on Friday, was that we leave today's meeting with three SMART goals. And those are really, these are broad themes, right? So if we want to check in and measure how we're, how the district is doing on addressing these goals, we need to have them, these SMART goals, which is the next slide, is a way to measure what we're doing. Before I talk about that, Gloria, did you want to add anything?
I, oh, three things. I think it's really important that when we end tonight, every one of us is committed to whatever we decide is the end product, that we're committed to, to the wording, the, the focus of these as the three goals or themes, and then we put them into goal statements. Second thing, I think it's important that we put in a, a regular way of reporting out on these goals, whether it's every single, you know, part of our agenda at every board meeting is a report on the goals, status report, what has happened since the last meeting, in the last two weeks or whatever, so that we're constantly keeping that in front of us and in front of the community so we can all keep each other moving forward. And then the third thing is, I'd just like to comment, I have since the, since the, the report in the Altman Enterprise, the article that was written about our conversation, some of the, on the board members were on that conversation with the, the eight young past graduates. I've heard from a few people in the community who were extremely impressed with the direction of the conversation and they were very happy about that, that the district was taking this on as a focus. So I was very pleased to hear that. And I, you know, I just think that we are definitely on the right track. I know we got a nice email today from four individuals in the community who are, were talking about, I thought they were reading my mind and our minds when we were talking the other day about, you know, task force and getting involved and making sure that we have the right voices, that we're constantly, you know, checking our assumptions because as we move forward, we have to be aware of some of the assumptions we might be acting under, may not be accurate. So we have, we have to have that third eye looking at and questioning and kind of challenging us in that respect. So I, I think, starting off with that poem, Seema, was a great idea because this can be very difficult work, messy work, but it is so vitally important. And I, I know I left our meeting the other day very excited and energized by it.
Thanks, Gloria. So we'll go to the next slide, Marie, unless you wanted to add something else?
No, I think that was perfect. So, Seema, do you want to talk about these?
Sure. So like I mentioned before, I think in the past, we've, we've talked about this, like Gloria mentioned also, we, we haven't had a timeline or a way to address how we'll check in. So first, I think, it doesn't have to be three goals and, you know, limited to three goals, but I thought that would be a good start in, at least in this hour meeting, to leave and try and aim to have three goals. And, you know, we can add as we need to. And that way, you know, these are something that we can look, you know, if it, if it is on every agenda, let's say, next, this academic year, and then we have another session like this midway during the year, so we can actually see where we are in, in terms of addressing these goals. Because everything in the past has been pretty general, so we don't really know if we've made any progress. I think this is probably the first time where we were, I think January was like the closest time we actually came to coming, or have gone to writing some goals and then. time we actually came to coming, uh, have gone to writing some goals and then the pandemic, at least from my, like, I think five and a half years now on the board. So, um, what, I think we started and so this would be the next step to write something more specific. I think that was a good discussion that night. So you see the slide here, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, time-bound. And, um, Marie kind of put in the SMART goals into a nice table on the, on the next, uh, slide. So, you know, for example, a goal is create a workforce that reflects the diversity of, um, the Gildan student body. And so doesn't have to be this, but this is an example of what a goal could look like. So I was hoping then by tonight, we could have three of these done. And like Gloria mentioned, that we all agree on that we, you know, plan to, to work on these. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Uh, Seema? This is Barbara. I just had a, a couple of things that I wanted to throw out there. The number one goal that we had in January, advancing the learning of students, particularly those that economically disadvantaged. I think we've seen as a result of this COVID epidemic, um, that body of students probably suffer even more than they have when they're in school. And I'm a little reluctant to let go of that goal of, say, for the next six months because that group of students and particularly our special ed students, uh, I think are going to need a little extra TLC over the next six months. And somehow or other woven into our goals, I, I'd like to see that group captured and sort of looked at by us.
I think that first Barbara, uh, can you hear me? Do I have the mic on? Yeah. I was, I was wondering Barbara, if, you know, we talked about that first theme, diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice. That's a huge thing. And I think that's where a piece of that, that falls there. So that under the idea of equity, are all students, regardless of their situation, have equal, have equity, have the ability to access the materials and things like that. And I think that's where that falls. That question and that, that population, that, you know, that would be a specific action we would need to, to look at under that goal.
Okay. And the other, the other concern that I had under the cybersecurity, uh, again, it sort of links in with what we just talked about, uh, as a goal that we assure all our parents that all our kids have access, um, you know, to the internet.
Yeah.
I don't know how we achieve that.
Well, that's the equity.
I know we had, I know we had some hotspots that, you know, we gave out and things such as that. But I, I think it's really important that we, we just don't lose that group of students. And you're saying it's going to be covered in that equity piece.
I think that's where we, when we flesh out, uh, I, I'm just speaking for myself as I see it, the broader goal of the diversity and equity piece under there, that would be a piece that we have to put. We have to make sure that that group of kids, that we're working on that, so that access to the internet is an equity issue. So how are we going to make sure? I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. Uh, uh, we didn't specifically talk about that.
So I'm, I'm just going to throw an idea out there because I think when we looked at the SDA data, it was clear that there were certain groups, like you talked about, Barb. There were several different groups of students that weren't being, um, they weren't being served, right? Like we, uh, the way that they needed to be served. So I'm just going to put language out there. For example, if we put close the academic achievement gap, right? Like, let's say that is the goal, right? Things that we would use to maybe measure, right? An example would be coming up with, um, some instructional strategy, strategies or interventions to address this underserved population. Just putting ideas out there. So, you know.
Now, is that, is that be considered a strategy so that the overall goal is to create equity or access to education? And then one strategy would be to make sure everyone has access to the internet, that we'd have a series of strategies we would work on to make sure that happened? Is that how that's?
So the, the goal would be to close the achievement gap.
Okay.
That's the goal.
Right. And you need strategies to do that.
Yes. So actions, activities, um, professional development, um, whatever it might be.
Okay.
Right. So in, like, if we're looking at a SMART goal, right? If we're looking at the S part, the specific goal is what would you like to do, right? According to the infographic. We want to close the achievement gap, right? So that would be a goal. I'm not saying this is, has to be one of our three goals. I'm just putting ideas out there. So if you disagree, um, something, you know, a way to measure that, um, what would be a way to measure that? We could obviously look at the data, right? This is kind of how we came to this in the first place is by looking at the SDA data. So, well, I know, I know SDA is only like one data point that we wouldn't have midway during the year. And to be honest, I have no idea what kind of data we're going to have this upcoming year. So maybe identifying like what data points we would look at to see how we're, um, closing the achievement gap.
I, I would be interested in hearing how our administrators are talking about that kind of thing. Cause from my point, I guess I'm thinking of, if that's our goal to close the achievement gap, then I want to probably say to myself, okay, what are the strategies we could use to make sure or to do that? And so then start to identify the strategies and then from there look at, okay, what actions now do we have to take to make sure those strategies are implemented? And then who's going to be responsible for it? And then what is the timeline? When are we going to look at this? And then what's our target?
Isn't the strategies and stuff more, more the staff and the superintendent bit of it? I don't think you get that granularity.
It might be, it might be, as Barbara said, it might be to increase the ability or the availability of internet for students. It might be that, you know, one of the things might be that.
That could be a goal. That, and that's it.
I see that as a strategy, but I don't know.
And then let, let staff figure out if that's even possible or how it could be possible. I think, right? And what Maria kind of would, kind of would go along?
So another way to think about it, um, because, you know, we are working on closing the achievement gap, um, is to think about how we provide supports to those children directly and how we provide supports to the teachers who work with them. So for example, I see our coaching model falling into this as a strategy because, um, what our literacy coaches do is help classroom teachers, um, become, um, better equipped to, uh, observe them, their students as learners and then know how to respond instructionally. That will close the gap. I, I'll just say about the metric, you know, we didn't take three through eight exams last year, so we won't be able to use that as a, um, as a benchmark. But we could use Fuentes and Penal benchmarking data, which is used at the elementary buildings. But we're not going to have state data and I don't know when we will.
Right. So that, that metric, you know, this year might be a bit different or maybe for a couple of years, who knows? But something will be used at the district level, uh, whatever it is, the administrators and the teachers decide, right, to measure how students are doing academically. And so that, that could be a data point.
Yes. I think, you know, I think we could turn to, um, our, our leadership team and say, so what's the best metric in this current environment to see if our economically disadvantaged students are closing the gap? And it's going to differ by level. So we would have to look at, in this new environment, what data points do we actually have that would give us insight into that?
It, it sounds like this might be easier that, well, not easier, but like we're doing a lot of these things already. It's not like we're going to come up with something that we're not doing already right now with, you know, the eight of us or nine of us. Maybe we just need to come up with the data point and then an enforceable or a, a timeline for repeat reporting back. I think that's what we're missing.
Yeah.
It's not like we're going to come up with any, anything that right now, maybe a couple of things we could think of that our staff is doing.
But I do think, I do think Kelly, even though the district is doing some of these things, I think it gives it more weight if we establish this as a goal because we know, you know, goals or whatever, like three, it could be three to five years, could be three years. And as we do the budget for the next, you know, every year you do the budget. I know in the past, when we've had no goals, the budget is like, it's like a miss. We have nothing to align it. Because people can just say, like, well, we hear, we'll hear from 10 people that something is important. And then we think that's important because we've heard from these 10 people. Whereas if we establish the goals and we know that this is what's agreed upon, it's, I don't know, I think it's a little bit easier to follow through with, with budgeting.
Yeah, no, I'm with you a hundred percent. I just think, I think we just, I think things are already happening. I think we need to, to find out kind of what we can do to, you know, get those data points or those, those, you know, those reporting back to us and accountability for it. We think we're missing the accountability. I'm not here to tell them how to do it. I don't know, but.
That's, yeah, I agree.
I think we hold people accountable.
I agree with you Kelly, cause we go back to what Marie went over at the very beginning. Our role is to set the goal and then like you said, over, oversight and evaluate. So we say, we want to be there and then you guys figure it out how best to get there and report back to us. You're absolutely right. And then we need to set some timeframe for being, for finding out how we're doing. Absolutely. I agree with you.
Maybe instead of a goal, we could call it a vision that we have. And then, uh, we can, uh, describe how we're going to follow through instead of calling it a goal and going through the whole procedure.
Well, we do have visions and mission.
Well, we have a mission and vision. I think this is what we talked about, I don't know, in January and then before that. I think everybody is in agreement with the district and the mission of the district. And it's, that's broad enough where it's, they're, they're good, but then the goals give you something where you can actually see if we're working towards it.
And measuring, to measure them.
The other part is, is really broad. So I, I have some other, um, ideas for goals, um, unless I, I can go, but, or I'll open it up first to other people who have ideas.
Well, so, so circling back to the first one that you mentioned, the closing the achievement gap. So that's the goal. And it sounds like we could probably fill in the strategies that were already happening.
Well, we don't even have to worry about that. Let the, uh.
Right. Fill in strategies. So, so where do we kind of leave that? So how is it, and we end and kind of have to discuss how we don't, since we don't know how to, how to measure it, maybe?
Well, I don't think we have to Kelly. I think we set the goal. That's our job, set the goal. And then we turn it over to the experts and the professionals that we've hired to do that work.
Right.
So that would be like Marie and the district coming up with the heart.
The leadership team, the, yeah.
Right. Yeah, because we don't work there, we wouldn't know what, um, but what we would do is hold it accountable. So.
We want to see it. We want to see the plan.
If we agree, let's say, just for example, that that goal is something that we establish as a goal, then, you know, in the board meetings, we say, where, where's the work on this going? And, you know, Marie would tell us, well, we've done X, Y, Z, or we're still working on X, Y, Z. And, or if they say, oh, we haven't really done anything about this.
Yeah.
We'd be like, all right, well, we want to make progress toward this goal. So it's, it's a way to, to, to check.
And I would, I would expect that we would see an action plan laid out before, as the year starts and what that team plans to do so that we can see where they're heading. And then we can check, they can check, we can check with them every so often. How are things going? Where are you moving to? What's, what's working? What's not working? So we can ask questions.
So the only play, other place I think we would need direction is, um, I don't think we can close the achievement gap a hundred percent a year. I'm quite sure we can. And if we could, we could write a book and we'd all be. So.
The wording that needs to be.
It's like, you know, so we would close the achievement gap by some percentage, you know, and I don't know if it's 10, 20%, 15% and, and by when? So, you know, by July 2021? I, I don't, I don't remember the data right now to know how far behind they are.
That would be good to, to figure that out.
But it seems to me if we, well, here's, here's the tricky part of this. The data that we looked at was pre-pandemic. And I don't know, as I think Barbara pointed out, that those kids may have been at point A in January, um, or at that data point, but, you know, they may be, they might be bigger.
Yep.
So I think what I would suggest is that, um, you let us take a look at that and let's see just how big that gap is and what is reasonable to say we've done a year from now.
The key is what is achievable and, and what is.
In a year.
And well, what's achievable, what's measurable?
Yep.
Those achievement gap is not measurable, given, you know, with those four words or whatever, not, is not a measurable goal. If you want to focus on it, let's.
And then in the normal year, we could say, oh, you know, we want to see the gap change by whatever percentage by looking at the SDA data and this data and this data. But we don't, we have no idea what we're looking at. So maybe Marie, if you could tell us, you know, what that gap is first and then, um, maybe give us guidance on, in the terms of the metric, because that I'm assuming is going to be different this year.
Right.
And then we could clarify that goal. And I, I can write this down as a goal. I'm kind of taking notes. We, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent set, but if you agree or disagree, or you want to say something, um, I'll write up these notes at the end, um, and then we can work from there. Um, I have some other ideas for goals that I can share unless you, somebody else wants to, um, share, otherwise I'll go ahead.
Well, I have one more thing just to, to, to re-discuss a little bit. Uh, we had talked, uh, Aden Fanatom and had been making pretty good progress on our later school start time.
Barbara, you're going to get what you were looking for. Trust me.
And, uh, I just don't want that shelved somewhere and, you know, put aside. You know, we had made some really good progress and I think we're almost at a tipping point and then COVID hit and, uh, you know, who knows what's going to happen. But I just want us to maintain our focus on that and the fact that it is so much better for kids and let's, let's just keep it in the forefront if we could.
So I just have to say this, this will be a news flash to people who are looking, based on our staggered start times and our no more than 20 kids per bus. It doesn't look like the high school is going to start before 10 AM.
Oh, my God.
So if you guys want information right now.
They should all do great next year, right? Based on that?
A goal achieved.
We just closed the achievement gap.
So. Um, I, it won't last to 10, at 10 forever, but I do agree with you Barbara, that I think once we get, you know, over this crazy August, um, we need to get the committee back. We need to go back and look at it. But we will have a later start time in 2021.
I mean, so the goal, I mean, that could be a strategy or, um, something that they use, like, right, the start time. But if we're, am I frozen?
No, you're no.
No. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. So maybe we could, I think we talked before about, about something about the whole child or, um, thinking about the whole child and that could be a strategy under that?
It is actually a strategy, not a goal. I mean, what you're asking the problem, what problem are we solving? That's the goal we're setting. So, so we are going to, um, you know, I'm not making this up because I haven't really thought about it in this framework, but if the problem is we have sleep deprived children who are underperforming, we're, we're addressing those concerns.
Yeah. An emotional, physical, emotional, psychological need.
I like putting that out there as a goal, Barb. Say at, by, it could even be, you know, by the end of 2021, have a process for 2022 to implement our strategy of later start times. That gives a, a year to recuperate and a year to re, reset. And then we're good in 2022. I don't, I don't know if that's way off or too far, but it might be realistic. But we could use lessons learned through COVID to, that might change, you might change your whole perspective on this stuff.
Right.
So that, that, that could be a goal right there is by 2022 implement, you know, later start times. It's, it's achievable, it's measurable, it's.
For high school.
Forever, for high school. Right. So might, might need a little massaging, but that might be it.
Yeah, I can write, can you hear me now? Sorry about that. I'll write that down and we can fix the language, but I think, um, I mean, this is something we've been talking about for a while. And I don't think you meant one o'clock, Barb, but whenever it gets back to more than, you know, not going. And I don't think you meant one o'clock, Barb, but whenever it gets back to northern, you know, not going back to the original start time.
Yeah. Just one, one more thing that we have talked about and we sort of implemented at the middle school is that mental health clinic. And then again, in light of COVID and all the stresses that these kids have been under, could we put as a goal enhancing or at least reviewing our mental health efforts? You know, on behalf of the kids?
A goal could be like a commitment to health and wellness, right?
Right, exactly.
That actually.
Then you would measure that by how many kids have access or, how many visits to the social workers.
How many suspensions?
Right.
It might be a year of gathering data and seeing what the needs are. Because we don't really, maybe don't know now what my kids might need based on their experiences with this. But maybe gathering data and being attentive to that kind of data, absenteeism, whatever. And then looking at that and saying, next spring, do we need to implement something more?
So we do have a comprehensive counseling plan that Lisa knows in, in a large group of stakeholders, including people within the district and professionals outside the district, like from Northern Rivers and, you know, from a variety of entities. They have a plan that looks at all of that, the data, the strategies, the timeline.
Great.
That we are, we're required to have.
So we might, we might want to do some oversight with that. We might want to have a report on it and so we can, you know, kind of question or give suggestions or.
Well, i- is it actually a problem at this point? Is there some kind of, out of that says that we're having an issue with this or is it?
We don't know.
Like where, where is it coming from? Just general thoughts from the news or?
Anecdotally, it's very bad.
What tells you that? Teachers, students?
Everybody.
Doctors.
Well, I'm just, well, Kelly, how do you measure a goal if you don't know what you're measuring or know what the problem is?
Kelly, I do think there, we have some challenges here as measured by numbers of students with chronic absenteeism.
Okay.
Hospitalizations for mental health reasons. Disciplinary kinds of things. I mean, there's a host of data points that would tell us that we, we have students who are struggling.
That's all the background that I, you know.
And I imagine it would be getting, it would get worse. It could be getting worse with what's happening. So, that would be my guess.
So I'm wondering, you know, I'm, I've been struggling a little bit to figure out what our program reports are going to be about this year because I haven't had a lot of cognitive space. Maybe, maybe I can have Lisa do an update on the work of the committee and their counseling plan.
That would be great. Okay. I also had recruit and retain a diverse workforce by developing some type of hiring process or developing a hiring process plan. I don't know. I know I've said, I think I've done a couple of search committees for the district. And we had to have like maybe a little bit of background on what the position is. And I don't know if there's more that happens at the district level that I'm not involved in. But maybe part of that process or, you know, part of that hiring process is to develop a plan to address this because it's something that, we know that the, the district's already been working on. We know that it's a challenge. We know it's not unique to Gildolin. And I don't know what you guys think about that.
I think that's an excellent one. But I, I think you're right. It's more in terms of designing some strategies to try out to, and then report that how are they working, to, to look at what might be the obstacles that we're meeting. And then talk to people who are out there looking for jobs and find out what are the, you know, what are the ways that we could attract.
I, I looked a little bit into this. I'm sorry, Marie, do you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I, the goal is probably not a process, but an outcome. So the, the sample SMART goal I created, the goal was to have two individuals of color apply to open positions in order to increase the pipeline. I don't know if that's realistic or not. I, I.
We'll find out.
But I think that's more of a result as opposed to we've come up with a plan or we've created a new process. Just to stick on the, the measurable goal piece. Because it's easy to come up with a process. Process may not result in anything.
So would, do we have to say a number, Marie? I feel like when we say it's, I feel like we're just trying to fill something versus to have data on the, on the applicant, like the data on the demographics of the applicants and then to increase the diversity of the, the demographics of the applicants or something like that. I don't know. You guys would know better than I would on how to phrase that.
Hey, Marie, are you, are you familiar with the, the Take a Look at Teaching program? Have you heard of that? So, you know, in talking with, I don't know, my wife, she brought this up as a, as a thing that's happening out in Buffalo where, I know we're kind of getting granular, granular into it, but it's a global thing of the program is, is, is focusing on the students, people of color and taking them selling, hey, take a look at teaching and then partnering with the, with local universities like St. Rose, who I don't know, has a focus on teaching, like growing our own, you know, really kind of.
They're growing their own initiative. But I think like you said, Kelly, that's getting granular, like, you know, I, I know some of that just because of work, but I feel like the people who are working at the district who are working on this should, right, should be the ones that say this is, this is what we're doing, like accountable to us.
I just want to throw it out there as something I was thinking about because I thought it was, I wasn't even thinking about looking at it that way. So it's a big thing to start and to do. So I'm just wondering if, just want to throw it out there as a, as a thing that's happening. That thought was really great.
It is. And I, I don't, I won't word walk too much, but this is an interesting story. I was at a workshop on this very topic and the presenter was a black gentleman who is a, was a teacher and now is a professor and consultant. And he did this study where he asked current teachers at what age someone said to them, have you ever thought about being a teacher? And for white teachers, it was, you know, eight, nine. And for black teachers, it was twenty-two, twenty-four.
Wow.
I don't have the data exactly right in my head, but the invitation to the profession is disparately given out.
That's the kind of change that needs to happen. Like that, that's it right there.
Yeah, because I totally agree with you, Kelly. It's an active approach. It's not passive, right? It's, it's like actively trying to change it.
Yeah. And like the state ed department has like grants too, where they try and support teachers of color to.
Right.
So there, there is support there, but it's, you know, like, so, I don't know how you'd phrase it, Marie, where, you know, we're talking about not the process, but what are we trying to reach at the end?
Well, I'd workforce, I think.
Yes.
But, but we have to deal with the process if we want to, we want a different outcome, we have to change what we're doing. So.
Oh, yeah.
Have to state what the process is going to have to change if we want the outcome to be different. So I think it is a process and what the, what, what do we want to see is the outcome? We're hoping that the process we set up now will give us a better outcome. So I think that is the, you know, it is important to look at our process.
I don't know what the process is now, like with the whole plan in terms of. Hiring, but let's say, but let's say that there's, you know, an unintentional bias type training that have, I'm just giving an example. I'm not an expert in this, but that would be an example of, oh, we're developing a plan for hiring practices. Part of that plan includes unintentional bias training or something like that.
Yeah.
So the district would have to create that, that piece, but we're saying that, but we're saying, right, that we want to have a, a plan or something that they're showing us that they're addressing this.
Yeah, that we try some different things to see what works and what, what we might do differently. Because obviously we're not.
Well, right in the beginning, Marie said we had, I think it was twenty-six percent non-white students and I don't, is it one or two percent?
It's low.
So a goal could be increased it to two percent, you know, or something. Is that, I mean, that's measurable and that's specific and that's maybe achievable. Hopefully that's achievable.
Yeah.
And then, and then Marie and the staff could work on some ideas.
How to do it. Yeah.
I mean, it could be that simple. Increase it by, yeah, one percent in one year and five percent and double it. There you go. You know, or five percent in five years, one, you know.
Let's try to double it in a year.
And we could revisit it. It's not realistic. Revisit it next year.
I was going to say, maybe we don't know the number just by randomly guessing the percentage that we want to increase it, but maybe that's some homework that we have to do is go back and see what would be like the right percentage that we're trying to move for. And none of these so far, we've talked about a timeline. When I was, I just read a little bit about, I guess, goal setting before this. And we were talking about like three to five years as a goal. That doesn't mean that we don't measure along the way. But a lot of these things take time for actual to, to occur. So I don't know if we want to stick to that for all of them or think about this and come back later about the timeline, but that's something also to.
Yeah, something like the achievement gap, it might be a three-year goal and we might monitor it every, you know, twice a year or something, but other ones might be.
Might depend on the goal.
Yeah, exactly.
I have a comment if that's okay.
Yeah.
I just think as we set our goals and we try to figure out a way to measure everything, we really need to keep in mind that we're in a pandemic. So this, what we experienced this year may not reflect, you know, how good of a goal it was or how well we worked at achieving that goal. So I'm almost hesitant to set goals that are going to begin during the pandemic, to be honest with you, unless they're like very long term. Because I really feel like the pandemic is just impacting everything. It's going to impact a lot of the things that we brought up today. So that's my two cents. Unsolicited.
Right. I mean, the way I, I think it's a good point, Barbara. The way I see it is that school is not going to be normal this year and potentially, I don't know how many years, but definitely not this year. So there has to be some change in curriculum. There has to be some change in the way school is happening. So if it's, if it's kind of deconstructed already, why not include, I, I feel like instead of aimlessly putting it back together because we have to work on putting, getting school back to normal, why not include those pieces in now when we have the opportunity to do it? But you're right, like, there's, there's probably only so much we can do while we're trying to just get back to normal.
Well, having things like, you never know, maybe having a virtual online teaching recruitment thing might bring in people from far away that we never even thought about doing before.
Right.
You never know, you might be on the phone with somebody from California that's like, yeah, I've been moved to New York. That's a great deal. We never even reached out to them. Now we have this forum that we're all getting so used to. Maybe, maybe it'll help for that. You know, no idea. But I, yeah, I think a one-year goal is a little bit, a little pushing it for any. I think you need to focus on, you know, masks. Like that's enough to focus on for the next year, but I, I, I think a three to five-year goal and then revisit, let's, next year during, the next time we have an election or, you know, next, next summer. Okay, we got nowhere on these goals. Okay, let's restart them. Is it really measurable? Is it really, you know?
Well, also, sometimes when things are up in the air and, and a little uneasy, it's a good time to make change and maybe we'll see opportunities. So I think we need to, somebody said we need to be flexible because things will change, you know, constantly. So, but I, I think having the goals is, is something that can guide us, keeping our eyes open for opportunities.
I do think that because of the, the phone call that I, I know I wasn't part of, but we keep referring back to. And we recently got that email from parents that want to be on a committee. I don't know what, how we want to address this, but I think we need to come up with some type of goal where that, all of these pieces that we're kind of talking about informally fall under that goal. So I'm open to, to suggestions or I can come up with some.
I, I would say that, you know, we had a task force on the late start. I think a task force on diversity, we already have some members from the community who have, you know, expressed an interest. Obviously, a number of us as board members have expressed an interest. It's a very simple goal, establish a task force, you know, to improve, well, the curriculum, the hiring and.
I think, yeah, the educational and cultural environment of our.
Right, exactly. That would be very easily measurable. Did, did we have meetings? Did we, you know?
And people could apply to the committee, you know, write a letter.
Right.
What would you bring to the committee? Why will you be interested? And I think that would be a great opportunity.
I do think that, that's great to, to measure, Barb. So I wrote that down because that's one that's easy at least to say that we've done or not done. But I do think we should acknowledge that this is a piece of a bigger goal that we're trying to achieve for the district. Because I can tell you from my own work, my own perspective, that if you've created a task force or hire an equity, like do one thing to say that we're checking off the box of addressing diversity is like where goes the die? Because I think I said before, it gets siloed. That, that's one piece. So I think we should do this, but also somehow acknowledging the goal that it's part of a bigger picture of what we would like the goal to be in the district. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, I think, Seema, I would agree with you that the, the hiring of quote, an equity officer, to me is like, okay, we checked it off. That, and that, oh, this person's in charge of it now and we don't, and we, everybody wipes their hand and washes their hands of the problem. But I think putting a task force together where the community is involved, you know, parents, staff and all together working on this, that to me is more systemic change. It can make big changes in the district. If you've got a group of people, twenty-five or thirty or whatever, consistently working, raising questions, pushing, that can be a really powerfully, powerful change agent.
Yeah. And I'm saying not either, I'm not saying or, I'm saying both. Or what else, you know, that we're addressing this bigger issue, this bigger problem that we know that we need to work on. And here are several ways to achieve that. So or a board appointed commit, because task force to me seems like it's more temporary, like, like a pandemic task force, like, well, hopefully that's somewhat temporary.
Well, we have facilities. Sometimes they're short-term. I think it depends on how the board sets it up.
Yeah.
You know, we set up like the start time task force. We did the facilities one. You know, we set it up for a limited time. So we might make this not that, we might not put, you know, a, a time limit, but more a task. Or a goal for them.
Yeah, it has, of course, yeah, it implies that there's one task. I get it, Seema.
It's a commission.
Commission, yeah.
Or what about a committee? So like we have a business practices committee and a communications committee. What about an equity or social justice committee?
Yeah, it has to be ongoing. This is not going away. It's not going to go a year, five years, ten years. It's going to be an ongoing thing for.
Yes, and it needs to be. It needs to be.
So, yeah.
I was going to say, I have no problem with the task force because multiple voices coming from various perspectives can certainly add to the conversation, redirect the conversation perhaps. Recent graduates, whatever. I, I think the more you involve people, the better the results are going to be. And you don't have to make it, you know, time limited. We could set it up for a year. You could extend it if they're working well together and we're achieving things as a district. There's nothing that says that they have to go away or fold up shop. But I think it's a fantastic way to continue the conversation and to, you know, to, to really get multiple voices.
Yes.
And, you know, people I'm sure are willing and able and I just have great faith in reaching out to the community and, you know, sort of following their lead and getting as much information as we can.
I like the idea of having, making an actual board committee because then it's going to main, it's going to stay. Like we, we have a task force, you know, it could be with high school parents and then their kids graduated and then they're like, you know, they're retired out in, you know, Florida. If we have, make it a board, part of the board policies and board members come and go, but that policy, that committee is always there. We could rotate people in and out. A task force, parents are going to leave, you know, they're going to move.
But you could set, you could set the task force. You could set the task force up that set, you know, so many percentage parents, so many, so that when parents do leave, then you bring new community members in.
You know, the audit committee has.
During.
The parents. Community members on it.
Right.
So it could be similar to that and have community members as well as board members and administrators.
That's what I was thinking too, Rebecca, that that one of the committees, I couldn't remember which one had community members anyway. So I don't know why it would have to be different. But I do agree with whoever said. So I don't know um why it would have to be different. But I do agree with whoever said, I don't know if it was Kelly, that um, to give it weight is to have it board-appointed and to be there. Because it's gonna continue to change as demographics keep changing as, you know. This is clearly from the, the phone call that something should have been there for a while. So, um. I don't know. I haven't heard from Ben, Luciana. I just want to make sure you guys have input as well. You don't have to, I'm just sure that.
No, no, that's fine. Um, this is great conversation. Um, it's not an easy answer. I think that's why we're, we're struggling to come up with uh one concrete thing. Um, another idea that I've, I've thought of is creating like a, a student organization to also address this. Um, if we could have students involved, uh, maybe they feel more comfortable talking with other students. Maybe they could come up with, uh, they could create like a student-run event for other students or they could educate other students. Um, you know, that's just another thing to throw out there.
Yeah, I think we need student voice in this. We, we spoke a lot today with our leadership team about empowering student voices. So, I mean, we have, we have a variety of clubs and activities at the middle and high school that are linked to this idea, but maybe not, you know, really all about social justice. I, I thought that that phrase, social justice, is the way to go. Because the diversity, if you remember those definitions, is just about numbers. And I don't think we just want to talk about numbers. I think we want to talk about how we correct the problems of the past.
But that also is equity. It, it's not necessarily just social justice. It's equity that we want all kids to succeed, all kids to be treated equally, all kids to, to feel that they belong.
Well, the equity, equity is our responsibility to make sure our policies and our practices allow for that. So we can do that as a board, but changing people's behaviors and mindset, those are very, you know, that you just can't legislate it and say, okay, put it in, put it in words on a policy and then it's gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. It though, that's the hard work of, uh, and that's why the social justice piece, because that's the action.
That, I, I think a social justice board committee and enduring, like written into, this is gonna continue until we stop it, is awesome. And I, I don't know, I don't know if we should keep circling back to all kids. I, 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 I like all kids, but it kind of is reminiscent of all lives type of thing. We're like, we're not really, you know, we're. Yeah, yeah, all lives matter. Okay, I'm not, I'm gonna go out there and say that, but like, that's not really what we're focused on right now. So I don't know if drawing it back to all kids is, is almost too, rings too much, too many bells.
I think Luciano.
So, you know, some of the, uh, some of the equity pieces that we may or may not find we need or, or enact or whatever, um, they do benefit all students, right? I mean, if, if we come to the conclusion that, you know, the no hat policy at the middle school is, you know, colonialist, you know, and not, and not, um, you know, not considering other cultures and stuff. Well, it, it benefits every child to, to that, you know, that we change that policy that says there's no hats. Um, you know, if we start introducing more restorative justice models in our schools, you know, that's, that's equity amongst all peers, you know, and um, you know, I, I think the whole point of this, of this discussion is really not even, you know, um, just black students, but really all people of color, from all cultures, from all um traditions who have, you know, who, who should be accommodated, you know, in our system. So, um, you know, to, to, to Kelly's point, I just wanted to respond to that, you know, um, this isn't, this isn't just for one group of students, um, although that is the group of students that, um, you know, may need the most change. Um, you know, these changes aren't just for them.
I think, um, Luciano, you brought up a great point about having that student voice and like Marie said, empower student voices. So I think if we talk about this, I mean, we don't have to flush the details of the committee piece now about the committee for diversity, et cetera, but maybe there is a, I know that none of our, I don't think our other committees have students involved, but I mean, is there a policy against having students involved in the committees? Can we, you know, include representation from the student body on this committee? Uh, you know, uh, there might be other things that happen at the building level. But this would also be a way to bring it back to the board is by being involved in this committee. I don't know what you guys think.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think if we're creating, we're creating the task force, we can make it up. The makeup is up to us. And I think the student voice is absolutely essential. Because I, you know, and I think we have to have other voices too that aren't gonna, because I, I really think sometimes we as a group will make assumptions that are not true. So we have to have that other voice that's gonna challenge what we say even, I don't know how we do that. Whether we have people from outside look at what the community comes up with. Uh, but we've really got to be challenging ourselves to look, to find the people that will challenge what we're doing too. So that we don't, we don't create the same problems.
If we create this, people will come. We can, I can think of ten people right now. We're gonna, we're gonna have a committee of fifty in like a second. I promise.
That's great.
So it might be a select committee or it might be representatives from a community, like, you know, different leaders of groups or leaders of student, students. Um, I think it'll catch on pretty fast.
See, I, I think there's a thing of a task force and a community group. I think back to when um our illustrious consultant decided that uh we should close Eltonon Elementary School. And then we set up a task force, you know, trying to, how are we gonna use the spaces in our buildings? And again, that was to me a great example of the community getting together, uh, dividing themselves into various groups within the task force. And then, you know, presenting before the board, um, what they thought were viable solutions, you know, versus closing a school. And I see this almost as the same way, that you're gonna have, open it up to as many people as are interested in the, in the issue. You know, there's gonna be some falloff, uh, that's just endemic to any type of a task force. But then within that task force, there may be some that are more geared toward uh personnel issues. So there's maybe more geared to curriculum and investigating, um, you know, what we should be teaching. There may be others that are more interested in the, the health parts of the equity issue. Uh, others may be more concerned about the um, uh, what do you call it? The internet access and things such as that. So I'm leaning towards a, a task force versus um a committee of the board, because in a committee of the board, you know, you can only have, what, four members or five members? Or then it becomes a meeting of the, of the whole board. There are all these nuances. Whereas if you have a task force that reports to the board, that the board is a part of, that students can be part of, you know, teachers, whoever's interested. Um, to me, that's a broader coalition, you know, for what we're trying to achieve, I think.
Yeah, maybe we call it the.
Yeah, this might just be a language piece. I think we're all in agreement that we want to be inclusive of community members, board members and students, probably teachers too. But I, um, I, the, I, I, in the way I don't see it, it's the same as the Eltonon School piece is, that was like a localized, that was like a time, that was something specific. And once that decision is made either way, you know, you move on. This is not, this is not in that same.
This is a lot, much longer.
It's a words thing for me. That's, that's pretty much. Coalition, whatever we can.
Social justice coalition.
That's gonna be enduring from board to board to, to, you know, teacher, you know, it's family member to family, you know, whatever, when people leave districts, I just want it to endure. So whatever words we can come up with, I, I, that'd be better.
I like that term, that's a social justice term. It says the work that focuses on systematic transformative change.
And I like coalition, just because I like it.
Yeah, social justice coalition or something like that. But the.
Is it premature to vote on this? You know, it looks like everybody's all in. We all want it. We all want a committee.
We don't know what we're making yet.
But we can, we can agree that we want one.
Or is it a board, subcommittee that endure for generations? I mean.
Yeah, I don't think we should rush. I'm not.
Right, we.
Can we agree to the goal at least?
Yes, we're doing here.
That's what we're trying to come to. We're trying to agree to the goals before we leave tonight, at least the goals, maybe not the wording and that.
No, so that'd be one goal. That we want to establish this coalition of, of community members um, to explore the uses of equity and social justice, da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah, uh, Blanca, I mean, I, I agree with you, but I, I think what my plan is, is to take, I'm writing down notes, what we're talking about. And to maybe have like a clean-up document that we go back, that we can, you know, think about for a little bit and edit. And then, um, I, I wouldn't want to rush to vote on something without doing a little bit of, um, more homework or getting more input. Um, I know Damian's also not here. I know he can be here, so to make sure that we have, um, I, I don't want to rush to vote.
Yeah, there's no reason to rush.
I think what.
Right? Isn't that the goal of this particular meeting? Is to set the goals? I think I just said goal like ten times in a row. Our goal tonight is to set goals. And we've only been on the first one, so I was just trying to say, yeah, we all agree. We're, we're all in for, for this first goal.
We have four.
No, but wrong. That's not what this is about. Were, were we agreed to them for?
No, no, it is. I, I think it is. We have, I have four or five written down already.
Yeah.
So I don't think that's the first goal. I apologize. I don't know what's going on on the internet, just talking about technology connectivity.
The only thing I see of not establishing it as a goal, at le, at least sort of as a cover goal, is that we may lose the momentum within the community. Um, I think they'll still be there if we reconfigure in August or September. But I almost hate to waste the time between now and September. Uh, if, you know, we could at least get some heads together and get some thought processes going.
Well, we're supposed to. How I see this, this is the first draft. I, I don't want to submit the first draft to the journal. Like, this is our first, our messy first draft. I feel like we need to just clean it up before we actually put it out there on the record and vote on it. That's all.
And practical matter, there is no way we can start a task force work. We're buried. I can't state that strongly enough. And, and I think we need to be thoughtful about how the work goes, but it, it seems to me that, um, you know, if we can look at the framework for this, and I would be, Seema, I'd also be happy to take a stab at um, putting together, you know, like a charge to the coalition kind of thing and I, as we've done in the past, that the board could, um, you know, agree to when we meet again and then send, get the word out to the community that we're soliciting letters of interest to serve on this. And I can see it happening early in the fall. And I don't think we'll lose momentum. People right now are crazed about what's gonna happen with kids going back to school. Just trust me on this.
Me.
Yeah.
I know people that hope are hoping that that'll come up too.
So I, I have five goals, I think, written from what we've talked about. Um, we can either keep going, but I know it's close to seven and just wanna respect people's time. Um, so we could either spend a little bit more time and come up with a couple more, or I can take this, clean it up and make it a Google Doc and you guys can just add your input. Um, you know, I'll just have editing everybody.
Seema, uh, you can go with the five and then I have four down, but um, do we want to have the one about facilities? And the one about cybersecurity and safety?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we've, we've touched those.
Those are the only two. No, but.
Facilities. So, you know, something that I've, I've talked about a couple of times before is, um, you know, a lot of times when we throw up a capital project, we don't, we don't really have, um, you know, it's repairs to, you know, fifty-year-old cabinetry and, um, you know, uh, thirty-year-old labs and, and things like that. Um, you know, but really, we need to do more than just be keeping up. You know, because we're keeping up with school buildings from the, from the nineteen fifties. So, um, you know, my thought was, you know, um, to create an actual vision for what buildings look like in the future, um, kind of, you know, um, like the, the, uh, is it Glen, is it Glen's Falls that has, um, Queensberry?
Queensberry.
That has, uh, that beautiful high school. Um, you know, obviously, the, the goal would be to pass the capital project, you know, that, that would come with this. Um, but, but I think the way that, what I'm kind of saying is that that particular capital project should be, you know, school of the future capital project instead of, you know, um, uh, the parking lots need to be repaved kind of capital project. And that we should actively explore what schools should look like in the future. You know, getting feedback from, from teachers and students and, and people who are in these schools right now to kind of say, you know, what we have was good for thirty years ago. And, you know, what we need ten years from now is X. You know, here's this vision that we have and really get people to it and then to, you know, pass our capital project.
I, I'm totally in agreement, Ben, like, especially if we're talking now also about the safety piece too with facilities. You know, like, I remember talking about in one of those reimagine meetings with social distancing and how in elementary schools, we bought tables for years instead of desks. And now we're like, oh, we need to have kids socially distanced from each other. So not saying that it's gonna go one way or the other, but to basically what you're talking about, to rethink how the school buildings are um, structured and think about what's coming up for the future. And knowing that, we know that a lot of the buildings that we have are old and kind of falling apart, so why not take advantage at the same time?
Right, instead of treading water, um, you know, pick a, you know, pick a, pick a direction, have a goal and, um, and share it and, um, and right, as, as we're replacing the ceiling tiles at, you know, school, um, we can also, you know, make the upgrades instead of just repairs.
And I think it's a, there's a, an education piece about this with the community, because that was our problem when we lost that budget. We had to go back and take things out, because I don't think people really understood that term, future-ready classroom. So there's an education piece that has to come in there, so people understand, you know, why it is that the classrooms of fifty years ago aren't gonna work for, uh, you know, kids today in the future that they're gonna be facing.
Well, maybe as a first step to this, um, we take a field trip to Queensberry um, and talk with them about the four or five years of groundwork they laid before they went to a vote.
Yeah.
Um, I happen to know the superintendent there very well and he's, I've had a conversation with him before. So if we wanna.
That would be great.
Get a school bus and go up and take a visit. He'd be welcome. He'd be happy to have us.
Could we do it in the summer? Be fun while we're.
Uh, I would want to see how crazed he is right now. I have a theory. I just want to be respectful of that, but I'm sure it could be, you know, maybe in September, let's get this ship rolling and you know, before the snow flies.
It might be worth a field trip too for our other goal about the culturally, the social justice and the, uh, inclusion. To look at that school that Damian put us in, gave us the information about Needham in Needham, Massachusetts. That sounded like a wonderful place to just talk to people about some of the things they've done.
If we don't get to cybersecurity tonight, that, that's fine, or we can, but I want to make sure we talk just a little bit about what Gloria and I, what we talked about on Friday. I think what we said was to have, um, at least some of these goals. Or if we have more than three, like, you know, rotate the goals through the board meeting agendas to include them, to kind of keep it on our, uh, mind as to, you know, what's happening with them. And then meets somewhere in the middle of the year like this, or, you know, set a special meeting aside to reevaluate where we are on the goals. Um, it doesn't have to be this. I'm just throwing out an idea. I don't know what you guys think, but I, I don't want to not have a plan in terms of, oh, we set this and then we never go back and look at it.
Well, you know how, how Damian always, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ben.
Um, I, I liked your suggestion a lot about putting a Google Doc up, you know, where we can kind of write out, um, some of this a little bit more instead of, um, you know, bouncing around in a conversation where we all kind of agree with each other, but, but more of having the paper in front of us. Uh, I think that's a really good idea.
Yep, I'll do that. Gloria, what, were you going to say something?
That, that's fine. It's okay.
Okay. I mean, what do, what do you guys think after we come up with goals, depending upon the number of of goals that we have for this academic year? Um, now we figure out how many we're going to put on an agenda for each board meeting to kind of. Keep them on our radar as to what we've talked about that we uh, value and that.
We usually meet what, twice a month, so we can easily, you know, just do a check-in. But make sure it's on the agenda, check in. Damian, very often in his report, some of it's going to come up there and he could, he could give a report on a. You know, certain goals could come up under that, but just so we touch base every meeting on some, you know, at least half the goals, so in the month we've at least talked about.
And then mid-year, have a special meeting like this, and at the end of the year, um, another meeting to basically see where we've gone, do we need to adjust anything? Um, if things are not realistic, that kind of thing, because. I guess the one thing about the board, right, is that people could always be changing, so if we don't have like regular things to talk about the goals, then. Um, I I think it can just.
I know, I, I know, Seema, we talked about with Marie, a a template of some sort. We were talking about that, so I think it would be important as we. Fleshing out the goals that we have that template and we start fe- filling it in. And maybe that's the Google Doc we're talking about too, that Ben was referring to, that we have that available so that it's a living thing and growing. So that each month, we're taking a look at the that template and saying, you know, it's changed in this much, or we've added this, or.
And I think, did we already vote correct, right, about the board meetings for this upcoming year? So maybe we can um, set aside the dates that we already have or. Put a, put another one in there so we can establish these dates that we're talking about, because I know what will happen is. It'll be April, May, you know, oh, we never met in the middle of the.
Yeah, you're right. Put it in the calendar.
I think we need to establish those dates ahead of time, but I can, I can put ideas on the, on the Google Doc.
Are we meeting in August?
August eleventh.
Yeah.
That, the focus of that one is?
It's a regular board meeting.
Okay.
A regular board meeting?
Wow, regular.
There likely will be quite a few um. Action items because we will not have met for a long time and.
Right.
I I would imagine there will be quite a bit of conversation about opening of school plans and. I think it will be a busy night.
Right, because that will be after the governor announces what the, what the plan is. Oh, go ahead, Blanca, sorry.
I was going to say what you just said, because.
Oh.
Seven. Um, I do wonder, um. Is it something to consider maybe to have a special board meeting to focus on that? So that once the decision comes from the governor. We at least have an idea of what we want to do, or is there some kind of venue or opportunity to hear from folks in the community? That's what I'm hearing from people the most about right now. Um, diversity, yes. But what the heck is happening in the fall and can we know as soon as possible? So I just wonder, um, will having a regular board meeting sort of cut the mustard? Will we have enough time? And will that lend itself to hearing from folks? I know that a lot of it's up to the governor, but he's also already mapped out a plan which gives us flexibility district to district. Um, someone was saying something, sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, here's, here's what we've been doing, you know, we, we've just surveyed, we had like twenty-two hundred people respond to our survey. We have six focus groups committees that are comprised of people in the community as well as faculty, staff, administrators. Who are putting together our plan, so it's a hundred and twenty people who are working on. A plan, and we've got a group working on facilities-related things, another on instructional-related things, another on. Social emotional learning, another on health and safety, another on extracurricular athletics and special areas, and then another on HR. And they've been meeting. At least weekly and recent, and now more, because we have to submit our plan on the thirty-first of July, so a week from Friday. Um, so it's, we really cannot reach out to our community and say, well, what do you think we should do?
But when do we get to see the plan?
Well. So I have um, in draft right now, a framework. Um, that I'd like to share with the community, uh, in theory, in the next day or so. Um, but, you know, the facilities committee just met today and the HR committee is meeting tomorrow, and we have. Thousands of details to figure out because we are upending just about everything in order to maintain six-foot social distancing. And all the things we have to do to screen people and, you know. It's. I don't even know, I don't have an adjective for it. It is so immense. So what Amy, Parra, and I were talking about. Um, in between the retreat and tonight was um, releasing this framework of the plan, which talks about the basics of health and safety. The basic framework for when we would have in-person school for our K twelve children. The basics of our transportation plan, the basics of, you know, our operations. And then we're thinking about, do we do kind of a live stream town hall kind of thing? And so I just ran out of time to have that conversation with her before we started at five-thirty tonight. So I'd like to do that before we submit a plan to stay there. But the reality is, we have to submit a plan by the thirty-first. It's going to meet all the things that we have to do. And it's very likely going to be tweaked between July thirty-first and September eighth. Because there are just so too many things we have to throw out, like, um, the middle and high school have to rebuild their schedules from scratch. They usually spend six months doing that, and they're going to do it in four days.
So, Marie.
Yep.
It's a lot of work.
Yep.
And I I respect that, but um, I'm guessing concerned that it looks with the, like, with the turnaround time, folks may not get to see it. And I'm not even sure at this point if that includes me as folks or or Board of Education members. And also, I, and I, I just wonder, because I'm not part of these committees and I, and I don't know, and I, and I haven't heard what the plan is, what the plans or the ideas are. Has anyone considered that maybe it's not a good idea to reopen? Are all of these plans focused specifically and solely on reopening at any point in time? Did anybody consider not reopening? I'm just asking.
Well, ultimately, the governor is the one with valve, and he's going to tell us on August. First through seventh, whether or not we can or cannot open. So our plans right now, I will say, are largely focused on opening. Because if we don't open, we're going to go to remote. And our instructional committee is looking at, so what does remote instruction need to look like for next year? Honestly, that's simpler than trying to come back. It it is.
I mean.
I believe that.
I'm trying to be provocative here because I, I've heard all sorts of concerns and questions, and I share some of those opinions. Um, so, on the one hand, I anticipate as a public health professional, okay, that. Even if we go in in person, at some point, we're going to go remote.
Yeah.
I wonder, is it more disruptive to start one way and then switch to the other? Than to let everybody know ahead of time so they can plan that we're just going to be remote? And work within that plan to make sure that we have kids with special needs and meet their goals. So I'm not on those committees. I don't know what the plans are. I'm just, I'm wondering and being provocative. I wonder if that's been considered at all, or is it just, this is what we should do and reopen? So I'll leave it to you.
I mean, I think that we need to wait, right, until.
The governor tells us.
The districts hear from the governor, because otherwise, it's just like a, what if this, what if that, like, we don't know, but we're all in the same situation. And we all know that it's not going to be a perfect solution for everybody, like, that's just, that's just known. Like, it's not going to back, be back to what it was this last year, um, maybe hopefully at some point, but not, not right away, so. I feel like, I mean, Marie can answer, but I feel like they, I would rather them spend the time figuring out those details to try and get them back there if. The governor says yes and it's safe, um, then, because they already had an opportunity to have parents give input. I was at one of the focus group meetings. Um, you know, now we're, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be August. They have to turn their plans into to the state. I'd rather the time and effort be spent on, on those details, the thousands of details.
So we did hear from like a, like twenty-two hundred people, and I would say about seventy-plus percent of those. Uh, we didn't ask the question, will you send your children back to school or not? We asked the question, how comfortable are you returning your children to in-person school? And I would say seventy percent of those people said, um. You know, in the middle, like, we did it on a scale of one to five, one being I'm totally uncomfortable and five being very comfortable. And seventy percent were at the three and up, which is, I'm relatively comfortable or more. Um, so, I mean, I don't know what it means per se, um, but I just know that. We can't not have a plan to return. I mean. I I I think, I think I'm obligated as a school superintendent to submit a plan to return.
I'm not suggesting that we should. I'm saying we should also consider the other, you know.
I mean, what if a parent decides they don't want to send their child?
Right.
Have to have an alternative for them.
We do have to have an alternative.
So what, what if a staff member, because of health concerns, can't come back?
We have to have a plan for that too.
Yeah, I mean, this is unbelievable planning, uh.
I just feel like time's getting tight on it, and and I'm not insulting anyone in the town. I'm I'm saying in general, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Our numbers right now are higher than when we went on pause, so.
Yep.
Nope, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that five percent threshold.
I think I'd, I'd be shocked to find someone who's not comfortable, or who is comfortable.
Comfortable.
Like, uh, as we, as we get closer to August, actually earlier today, and because I'm dealing with this also at work, returning as a faculty member. Just thinking, can I just escape to an island somewhere? That's where it was today. But yeah, I feel like the August meeting will, I think we should probably, you know, have, it'll be a longer meeting to talk about these things.
Marie, I have a question. Um, in that instructional subcommittee that you have. Are there going to be requirements on the part particularly of our um. Elementary teachers, that they would have to be in contact with the students X number of hours a day or whatever? Because there was such disparity between what some teachers did and what others did. Some made contact with their kids every day in the morning at least, and. You know, gave them lessons to do and stuff, and others, you know, once or twice a week, so. Is there going to be any uniformity and what is being expected of the teachers, um, from, you know, from day to day?
You mean if we're remote?
Yes.
So, um, that committee is, you know, one of the, one of the big pieces of feedback from our focus groups was. An interest in consistent expectations and more routine-like schedules, actually for kids, it was K twelve, I, we heard that. So I haven't, I haven't been in Damian's committee, but I, um, I do think that they are taking, talking about. Um, you know, some general parameters for expectations on how much live. Connection there is across classrooms and across buildings, because it was, um, you know, it was not consistent. So yeah, the short answer.
Thank you.
Um. I think um, that finishes the agenda for tonight. Um, I will draft these goals that we talked about, and I'll make it editable, um, for all of you, just like you said, Ben. And so people can add their comments um, on there, and then this will be a working draft. And hopefully in August, then we can vote on some of these goals or may, may, you know, clear them up to make them, establish them for this year. But I imagine that August will be a long meeting with this and returning to school, so.
Well, if we can get the, the Google Doc going, we can all, maybe we can get it in a deep form that we're all comfortable with. If everybody contributes that then on August eleventh, we could actually, you know, accept them, and then.
Yep.
I still think we should go out beyond the year and just give ourselves some time, but.
Yeah, I think we're.
Yeah, they don't have time for this year, right? They could do three years or five years.
Oh, yes.
Still check in though, um, periodically during the year. So I'll write, I'll write this up and then I'll um. Send the link to you guys, so then you can add whatever you'd like.
Seema, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. It's hard to know when to jump in. Um, I just wanted to say two things really quick before we ended. I think, you know, we really need to recognize how much work, not just Marie, but the administrators and all of the, the school district has done during the last three months. Like, I manage an office of fifty people, and it's been amazingly difficult. Um, so I can't imagine managing across all of the schools, across all of the stakeholders, and there is no perfect plan. And, and I think we have to, you know, recognize that and and really recognize the work. And how much, you know, secondary traumatic stress can result from constantly evolving plans. So I just wanted to point that out. Um, and the second thing is, I wanted to ask about an in-person board meeting, and I know this came up and I want to be safe, but I go to work every day. Like, um, so I think we can have meetings potentially with, with people in person that are safe.
Yeah.
I think we can definitely have it. I mean, we're sending kids back to school with masks on. The, the reason I, I preferred this because I've had meetings with six feet away with masks on, and it's, it's almost more challenging. To have these conversations that we're having. My preference wasn't for safety as much as, I like, I could see your eyeballs better here, I believe it or not. So, um, that was my, that was my preference. I know Blanca had a different preference, but.
My concern is for safety, and I think we should look at the numbers and decide as we get closer, because if, if we're starting to go back up, I don't think we should have them. I do think we have to hold ourselves to the same standards as our students, and I don't think we should send them back now either, my two cents. Respectfully.
There was a comment in the survey about our meetings, board meetings, that if we're asking children to go back, then, then this, this meeting should happen.
There's a, there's a meme about it. Yes.
Yes.
I, I reached out to Seema, um, just to kind of say, well, I mean. Maybe some of us should show up in person, you know, for this meeting, because uh, right for the point, you know, uh, if we're going to send.
Yeah, and I would.
We should show that the schools are safe, you know, by, by going to the L G I and showing that it came down.
I would never say, oh, you know, send your kids back. These are my kids too, um, without meeting in person, so I totally get that. I just want to Rebecca's point, I think when I first joined the board, I, when I saw what Marie's job as superintendent, I was like, oh, now I know I never want to be superintendent. Yeah, now in a pandemic, it's like, to me, that's the worst job right now, so thank you for doing.
Thank you, Marie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Marie.
So we had twenty-three of us together in person today for our retreat. We were in the large gym. We all brought our own chairs and we were six, seven feet apart, um, masks, and, um. You know, it was, and I can let Regan or Neil jump in, it was actually a really good day, and it was so good to see people. Again, and get caught up in our socially-distanced lunch that Regan cooked for us. So just two cents that I think if you're, if you plan for it and you. Provide enough real estate, you can give people the distance that they need.
All right, so, respect everybody's time. I'm going to ask for um, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Gloria, second bar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes nine zero. Thanks, everybody.
Good seeing you.
Good night.